Welcome back to Municipal Month on the Cross Border Interviews with Chris Brown. I'm your host, Chris Brown, and I'm pleased and honored to have our guest on the show today. He is a current city councillor for the City of LaDuke. Councillor Ryan Pollard is with us today. Councillor, thank you so much for doing this. This is an honor and a pleasure to have you on the show.
Thank you, Chris. Very glad to be here.
So, councillor Ryan, I had started off all my interviews the exact same way with politicians from all levels of government, so you're no exception to that. But where did your sense of duty to serve come from?
I suppose it goes back quite a way to being a teenager and being involved in different groups, whether it was cadets or things that were happening in school. And later on in my university career, knowing, realizing that if I wanted things to happen, someone had to step up and do it. And if I had ideas about what should be done, I should be the one that does it. I should put up or shut up maybe. So going as a teenager in small groups, like duties come down to you from adult leaders and it gives you a sense and it gives you a vision of what you can do. And as things went along and grew into an adult and had a family and had a career, it became very clear that if I wanted things to happen in my community, in my life, who wanted things to be better for the people around me, I need to be standing up.
You chose to go into politics at a municipal level. You could have chosen provincial or federal. What was the decision behind getting involved locally at a municipal level in politics in the last election?
Sure. So I've lived in LaDuke since 2011. I'm from Prince of Rhode Island originally, moved to Alberta in 2009. As a lot of internally displaced people coming out here for work purposes. So I was involved in a number of community initiatives, youth groups when my kids were younger, being involved on the FCSS board that was here. And people in the community approached me and said, this is an opening that's coming up and why don't you think about doing it? And so I thought about it long and hard and discussed it, of course, very in depth with my wife, who's my partner in crime in all things, especially politics. And
Was it an easy yes?
No, it wasn't an easy yes. The reason being is because any kind of undertaking like this, I mean, running for office, if you're doing it correctly, is a time consuming thing. And it's also very taxing. And so you come home after knocking on a bunch of doors and then maybe you've had some doors slammed in your face or people that were angry to see, not happy to see you. And you can't, you're going to be in a mood probably. And you know, you don't want to inflict that on the people that are around you, the people that you rely upon and then support you day in, day out. So I knew that going in because it was not my first time involved in anything political and I knew I've seen what it's done to candidates, whether they won or lost. And so it wasn't easy. And one of the fears that I had was that, you know, I'll do this and you know, maybe, maybe, you know, I'll come out of it for the worse or the community will come out for the worse. I, you know, every person, I think, with a healthy view of their own limitations worries about whether or not they're going to do the best for the people around them.
Was there an issue that was passionate to you that made you say yes as well? Because I've talked to many municipal candidates, I've talked to many municipal councillors, and they always hearken back to that one thing that they saw that they believed they could have helped drive further and help drive a little bit faster in whether it be growth for the community, whether it be arts and recreation for the community, whether it be more communication from council to the residents. Was there an issue that was pressing to you that you said, I can see myself being a champion for issue X if elected on this council?
Well, allow me to be an outlier then, because no, there wasn't.
Oh, okay.
And don't let, don't let, don't let the impression set in that I didn't have an idea or a vision or something like that. But there was no one issue. What I saw was that LaDuke is a small city and it's an exorbitant, I drive, you know, 30 plus kilometers to go to my office in Edmonton every day in my day job, because it's not a full-time job being a city councillor for the City of LaDuke with a population of 34,000. But I saw that in my time here, I saw the city grow and I knew that before I came here, it had been quite small and it's over doubled its size in the last generation. And if you look around to other cities in Alberta that have experienced the same kind of thing, whether it's, you know, cities of the same kind of size, whether it's Beaumont or Airdrie or anything like that. My concern was that if I wasn't there putting forward the kinds of point of views that I, points of view that I have, perhaps it would grow in a way that wouldn't be conducive and to a good place to live. And I wanted to make sure that I had my ore stuck in there. The main things that I was concerned about were more or less that the city be there for people that were in need because over the past couple of generations, the last 40 years or so, what we've seen is just levels of government, provincial and federal, not investing in the social services like they once did, downsizing these things, downloading them onto communities and onto civil society. And it's not ideal. Of course, that the people at the bottom, whether it's the municipal governments or whether it's people in civil society, they're left to pick up the pieces. And we're not necessarily the best ones equipped to deal with it, but dealing with it is something that falls upon us where else it wasn't, won't get dealt with. And so one of the things that we're experiencing right now because of a number of things that have happened in society in the world is a growing problems with people experiencing homelessness and people being on the verge of losing everything. And there's a continuum of people, whether it be the people that are most visible, the people that are experiencing extreme poverty that you see on the on the streets and that are living through the kinds of difficulties that have happened, whether it was downturn in the economy, losing their house, whether it be mental health issues, addictions, they're the ones that are feeling it most acutely. And so one of the things I'm pretty happy to say is that in the past year, the City of LaDuke has come up with a framework for dealing with homelessness. And so that's very gratifying for me to know that certainly it wasn't my idea alone. And I'm not the first person to think that homelessness was a problem. But it's very gratifying to be able to be a part of those conversations and part of the initiatives that are coming forward in the coming term.
How much weight was put on you the day after the election from 2021? Because you are one of the few people in LaDuke who has had the awesome honor to sit at the council table and make decisions based on the best of the community. Because while you try to make everyone's life happy and positive, you have to look at it as a whole. How much weight was put on you or how much weight did you put on yourself of responsibility of the decisions that I made, the decisions that I'm going to be making at the council table are going to affect my neighbors, my own pocketbook? And I'm going to have to make sure that what I do is to put the best foot forward and respect everyone in this city, even if they don't agree with me and don't agree with the decisions that I possibly make.
The weight I felt and the weight that I feel is tremendous. And when I was in campaign mode, that's all I lived, slept, breathed, ate, was knocking indoors and trying to, trying to put myself out as a person that they would want to see at the decision table. It was weird, you know, as the campaign wound down. I took the last day before the actual voting off because I figured like there was very little else I could do at this point. And so it was then before the results came in, then I started really, it really started, you know, weighing, I mean, like whatever happens next, it's going to be the next stage of my life either. It's going to be a crushing defeat and I'll have to reevaluate where I am and/or else I'm going to be, I'm going to have tremendous responsibility on my shoulders. Not that I was blind to that going in, but I felt it pretty strongly even before the results came in. And the next day, it came very, very fast and we were, the election was towards the end of October, we were sworn in November 1st. Wasn't a lot of business on that first organizational meeting, but immediately getting down to the budget. And before we had formal meetings, I was lucky enough, we have very capable administrative staff here, brought into meetings to have briefings on the main issues that were before LaDuke in the day and what's going to be going into the budget deliberation. So I'd already taken a lot of time off work from my, from my other, from my day job. And I immediately had to ask for more time off to go to briefings all day long. But I certainly didn't regret it. It was exhilarating to be at the table when that was happening. So the weight was very, I felt acutely, but I was glad to be having to bear it.
One year later, has it gotten easier or is it still bearing, are you still bearing that weight? Because even though you're a year in, you may know a little bit more about municipal politics and you might have a little bit better sense of what who you are as a councillor. Are you still wearing that weight around your shoulders to say, okay, no matter what, even if I'm two years, five years, 100 years into this, I still have to make the best decisions for the people of my city?
What else is this? The immensity of it has never, I've never lost perspective of it. It has become easier because I'm experienced now and I know what I'm doing. Whereas in the first few months, I was getting up to speed on a lot of things and also having to adjust to other things in my life. Now I'm at a, at a good, at a good stage of development where I know what I'm doing now and I'm able to to, you know, prioritize what I have to move things around and also everyone else in my life who depends upon me. They're, they're used to my new routine.
Municipal councillors are kind of the frontline politics in Canada because you will go to the grocery store and you probably know the majority of people in your city because they voted for you or you've knocked on their door. How hard is to balance work and life? Because you have Brian, the businessperson outside of council, and then you have Ryan, the councillor, councillor Pollard, and constituents don't see the difference between the two of them. They see you as councillor and only councillor because you are, you are an elected official. How hard is it to balance that work-life balance in a municipal setting like LaDuke?
I don't find it hard at all. I'm pretty glad actually that, you know, I'm working for a small city the way it is and I'm able to keep my day job and I'm able to stay in the community in ways other than my role is as their elected councillor. Before I got into this, I didn't see a divide between the things that I did in my free time, the thing, whether it was involvement in church or groups that are around the community or with local political organizations, there was no kind of borderline between, between that and my personal life. So I don't find it much different now. I don't feel like I'm on the clock now and not later. If people see me in the grocery store and they have a concern, it's actually very gratifying for them to come up to me and because I feel like they've, if I'm approachable, you know, they feel safe to come up to me and say what's on their mind, even if they're mad.
Do you get that often?
No.
Oh, shocking. I've heard different.
In public, no, I don't. I get a lot of angry emails and texts and things like that. They're not the majority, but and you know what? People may, I don't know, look at what we deal with in municipal politics and it's zoning and traffic issues and whether or not people can access the park in a convenient way and they may think that it compels and compares into deciding, you know, what are the welfare rates going to be provincially or whether or not our country gets involved in a war in Eastern Europe. But these are the things that affect people on a day-to-day basis. You know, our city is growing and it has been growing. And so as a result, you know, we've had to widen roads and they go past people's houses and all of a sudden they live there for 20 plus years and now they can't enjoy their backyard because of the increased traffic. You know, that affects them on a day-to-day basis and that's, that may be the most important thing for that person. And it's not a small thing at all. And it's in that, I never really considered until I got into it, how those kinds of things would weigh on me as I try to fall asleep at night. But it's also feels really good to be able to do your best for that kind of a person and try to make their day-to-day life as pleasant as can be.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the City of LaDuke elects their councillors at an at-large basis, right? They're not city ward, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to double check before I asked my next question. As an elected official for your city, you are elected at an at-large basis. So you have to take into consideration everyone. And sometimes that means that your neighbor may not get the pothole fixed in their front yard because, well, the priority isn't there right now and it's somewhere else and it's at some other pothole or some other street or some other infrastructure project that takes consideration over that pothole or that local issue that someone wants addressed. How do you balance that and how have you dealt with the, the local politics while still looking at the larger picture of the City of LaDuke moving forward?
Yeah, that's a challenge. One of the things that has gotten people pretty animated is that there's, there's a park here. It's a Telford Lake and there's a boat house there and you know, that went in after, you know, a neighborhood had been there for a while. And so over, over the years, the traffic had gotten worse and worse. And there was actually the fatality in that neighborhood. And the matter kept coming back to the traffic advisory committee. And a number of things were tried and then most recently, and this is actually one of the first things I voted on, was setting up a gate at the, to the entranceway to that park to discourage, to prevent through traffic and what the consideration is there is, do, do you, do you go along with what the majority of the people that are emailing right now who are upset that that's been there and has made things more inconvenient for them? Or do you consider the, the minority of people who live in that neighborhood who are more acutely affected by it? And it's balancing. It's a balance of priorities and everything like that has to be taken on a case-by-case basis. And we also have to be ready, I think. And I, I'm, I've set myself up this way to revisit a decision if it happens to be the wrong one. What, what I find gratifying is, you know, you get into a new role and all of a sudden you're making new mistakes you've never made before. And I had an old law professor say to me, well, they say that an expert is someone who's made every mistake at least once. And so I'm glad to be, it's not, it's not good to, it's not good to make mistakes. It's something to be avoided, but I'm glad that I'm learning and growing. And the more of these decisions that are made, you learn, nothing ever goes 100% perfectly and you learn from what was done before and you learn to do things better the next time around.
Is communication is a key part of your priority as a councillor to communicate to residents of what's going on? Because I follow you on social media, you're very active, you post stuff on there on a semi-regular basis. Is it, is it a priority for you to communicate to your residents of what's going on in City Hall and sort of give people a behind-the-scenes look of who you are and some of the decisions you may make? Because like you said, if you make a wrong decision and you have to revisit it, you probably want to tell people, say, you know what, I got it wrong. And I want to try and revisit it and let's see what we can do to move this issue forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Communication is key. And it's funny, like, one of the things that I was doing over the summer was when I got a update of construction, I would just post it and say, you know, here's a laundry list of 10 different places where they're doing construction in the next couple of weeks. And people were happy to see that. It may be kind of mundane and maybe if it's not affecting a person, it might be, they'll scroll past and say, big deal. But the people that saw it and they were glad to see how they're going to be affected. That's a small example. We're doing a lot as a city. We have a very good communication department and the city messaging is very good. When it comes from a councillor, whether it's an announcement of something or it's, you know, asking people what they have to think about it. People appreciate it and people appreciate being heard. Most people that I speak to, they're happy to be listened to. The, most people understand even when things don't go the thing they want, the way they want. They just want to be heard for the most part is my experience. And certainly talking to people changes my mind. And people emailing me, sending written letters, texting, calling me. Every time that happens, like I have no agenda, I have no reason to be entrenched in the positions that I've taken. Whenever that happens, it goes a long way to influencing. And I think that more so than any other level of government, people have, when they gauge it that way, that they get a feeling that they have a say in what's happening, even if it doesn't go 100% their way.
Just still on this line of questioning a little bit for just one last question and then we'll go into the next segment. And that is, you talk about entrenchment in politics, especially your line of thinking. Have you ever gone into a council meeting thinking, okay, this is going to be an easy yes vote and an easy no vote? And then delegations or letters that you get from the residents of the City of LaDuke make you go, oh, I didn't think this way and maybe I should be looking at it from a different perspective than the way I originally thought I was going to vote and change your mind at the last minute because of what you heard from the general public?
I can't think of a time I've changed my mind at the last minute, like sitting here and I'm sitting at my spot at the council table right now. I can't remember time that I changed my mind sitting in this seat, but certainly my eyes have been opened numerous times from here, especially when people come to speak from the public. And certainly my mind has changed quite a lot, but I, I'm kind of, maybe this may be a downfall of mine. I like to overthink a lot of things and maybe overthink things. So when the time comes to make a decision, I probably, when the time comes down to it, like when it comes right up to the deadline, I tend to have my mind made up by then. But it's not to say that it hasn't come without a lot of deliberation and it doesn't come without changing my mind a few times sometimes.
Well, hello. This is your friendly host of the Cross Border Interviews with Chris Brown. I have some big news for you. I am pleased to announce that our show has partnered with Strategic Steps Incorporated to launch a brand new show on October 19th. The Political Trenches: Local Government at Work is a new show with a focus on local governments. Each episode, we will discuss the biggest stories from local governments and we will have a roundtable discussion on issues facing local governments today. Follow the new show by searching The Political Trenches on all social media platforms. We are looking forward to discussing local governments and heading into the political trenches. Thank you so much for answering that. The next segment I want to turn to is the actual city itself. And before we get into this line of questioning, I'm going to preamble this by saying this is the conversation between councillor Pollard and myself. He has one vote on this council. This is his opinion. This is not the opinion of the city. This is the opinion of him. So I just want to make sure I prerequisite that before I ask this question. Councillor, what do you believe is the biggest issue facing the City of LaDuke today?
The biggest issue facing the City of LaDuke today is what we're going to look like a generation from now. There are a number of things that were kind of impacting, sorry to use that as a verb, making an impact on, on the way LaDuke was growing. And that one was the airport facility protection regulations. And another was, you know, access to the city, getting around the city and getting into the city. And those are kind of, those are two things that have changed recently. And if I can use like a maritime expression, change the water and the beans here, like, so for many years, the municipal government here has lobbied to get 65th Avenue interchange put in. So allow access, greater access to other parts of the city and into parts that we haven't developed yet. And then around the same time, the provincial government changed with, after having lobbied for it to change the airport facility protection regulations. What that'll mean is we've already made some changes towards zoning. We'll be able to accommodate more kinds of development and more like denser development in the downtown core. And there'll be less pressure to expand outwards into greenfield developments. I mean, that, that's, that kind of a thing will probably happen naturally through the course of things, but the pressure isn't as high as it once was there. Like there were, there were restrictions depending on the noise levels from the airport about whether you could put a bowling alley here or a church here or dry cleaners there. And it was a bit of a nightmare for people trying to set up with them being amended. We can, we can build up more, we can densify more. And people aren't necessarily going to have these restrictions on their title to, that will mean that, you know, you can't put in the kind of building or the kind of business that you want here unless we expand outwards and create more industrial zones and create more neighborhoods in farmers' fields as they are now.
With growth, with potential expansion, with even going up instead of going out, comes infrastructure. And infrastructure is one of these big things that a lot of municipalities are facing right now because cities are aging. The money isn't there to fix everything as you want to because the tax base is not as high as you wish it would be. While you're looking at diversifying the growth, whether it be up and out, are you concerned about the age of the infrastructure that you currently have in the City of LaDuke? Or has the city been able to keep a good pace with the aging of its roads, its pipes, its sewers? Is this something that's even a concern for the city right now?
I think we're in pretty good shape. Like I said, LaDuke is a city that's kind of grown in the last generation for, you know, for many, many years up until the early 2000s, it was under, it was around 12,000 people and it's grown quite a lot since then. For that reason, most of the neighborhoods are pretty new apart from outside of the downtown core and the places that are near there. There's certainly there are older neighborhoods and everything. That's entropy. Everything, everything degrades over time. The older neighborhoods will need attention, but that's not a concern that most people have. I don't hear from very often. Things fail, things fall apart, things have to be fixed. It happens. And I think we can do a good job of staying on top of it.
One of the, while we can talk about growth and the changes of zonings and growing up and bringing more people to the community because of the larger population, if that was fixed tomorrow, if that was all done, if that main concern that you have, that first concern that you have or the issue that the city is facing right now gets addressed tomorrow, what's the next issue? What's the next issue that you would like to see addressed? If council decided to go, you know what, councillor Pollard has the right idea, we need to fix this issue tomorrow.
Okay. I would say that and I guess in your fantasy scenario, I can't fix what the provincial and federal government does either, right?
Well, you can if you want, because we've had municipal councillors on the show and in this long series where they say, we would love for the municipal and provincial governments to stop downloading projects and services onto us because we only have a tax base of certain amount and they're already overutilized and we don't want to keep on increasing property taxes for them. So if there's a provincial issue that you believe that needs to be addressed, what is it?
And it's not, it's not meant to disparage any given political party and at any given level of government. It's generations of both levels of government from every stripe of party. Not, not doing what I think should have been done to, you know, to set us up so we can live through, through a crisis like the one that we're living through. Let's not go too deeply into that fantasy. Let's pretend, let's, let's, let's make this a fantasy about what I would do with what I have now. And what I'd like to address are the, the cracks that exist in our social safety. The cracks that exist in our social safety net and and. That would be addressing issues of addiction and homelessness, mental health. And and housing. As I alluded to earlier, like homelessness is a is is one extreme end of a spectrum of housing insecurity. And and the absolute most visible, a step up from that are are people that are kind of a an invisible form of homeless. They're they're couch surfing. They 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 stay in shelters, they they live in a in a boarding house or something. The next stage up are are extremely people that are living. Paycheck to paycheck, very insecure and they're very close to to losing their home, whether it's a, whether they lose, they miss paycheck. Whether they're, it's during the period of eligibility for EI or something. And then I'm from that, you know. The regular kinds of affordability questions that that people face from in a day to day way. And there are ways to intervene at at each one of those stages. One of the things that that it's helpful for for people that that are not. Well, let me put it this way. Transitional housing is is a is something that's that's available for for some people that that are experiencing chronic homelessness and it's a way to. To get them into into a system so that the they can get onto a road to to living in a permanently housed situation. That'd be, that'd be one thing. That would be very helpful and typically that 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 comes with with help from from another level of government, another one that that has a better. You know. Has a better taxation power than we have. And then up the step up from that, actual affordable housing. We have different levels of affordable housing here in Laduke and some of them. A minority of them, they are heavily subsidized and it's. The rent that a person pays is a is a is a fraction of their income and if their income is higher, they pay more. If it's lower, they pay less. In my view, that's one of the best ways to help people that are living. Just above that that. That threshold of 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 almost slipping into homelessness. Helping people that 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 work where they're on a fixed income and. Regular. Housing costs are are out of their reach. I wish we could have more of that and certainly it's a thing that we try from time to time to to get. Grants from from the federal government to have the kind of housing and it doesn't always work for us, but it's always something we we try for.
What's the city doing right now to help? What's the city doing right now? Is there, is there a program that you guys have in place? Is it? Is there a partnership that you have with the local organization that you're helping? And I, the houselessness. Population within the city of Laduke or is it, is it something that you've sort of started since your time in office?
Okay, so Laduke Housing Foundation exists and it's it's a regional foundation and it includes parts of it includes Laduke County. And the town in the city of Beaumont, some other places. And so there is housing in that regard. So there's, there's subsidized housing for people. And there's a long waitlist and. You know, if we had more capacity there, that'd be that that would be extremely welcome for for people that are experiencing homelessness. Right now, there is. Like, there's not a lot. What I'll say is there's an organization here called the Hub and they receive support from the city and they have a. Drop in center through most of the year, people are able to to go there and. Have some of their their needs met, have some socialization. But apart from the emergency overnight shelter that the hub runs in the wintertime. There there really isn't a place for those people to go. So we have a framework that we just, we just developed. It's it's a very complex issue. Because in the meantime, until until the day comes when we're able to solve every problem associated with with housing. There's gonna be trial and error, there's gonna be, there's gonna be growing pains and and one of the things that that experience right now. And I learn about this all the time from from sitting on the downtown businesses that on the day on a day to day basis, people. You know, there's people that are there around. There may be under the influence of substances, they don't have a place to use the washroom. They're they're trying to support themselves through through bottles or getting wires or whatnot and and. And they're seen in the community and. Or they're they're sleeping in a doorway, they're sleeping in a park and. And clearly, people don't like to see that. And they don't want to like clean up a mess from someone from from having slept there the night before. So there's, there's a, there's a tension there and 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 neither side. Can be can be ignored or brushed off and so you you have to. You're you're managing a kind of a bit of a crisis in the meantime until until the next. Until the next intervention is is created to 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 resolve what's happening now. I wish that it didn't have to be as reactive as it is. I wish that we could have been proactive to to avoid. What has happened, but it seems to me that a lot of things, including the opioid epidemic, the. Covid, inflation, housing costs, all these things have conspired together and and as well the, you know, the downturn, the economy. Economy that came along with at the same time as COVID, they all conspired together to to create a crisis and. We're we're in a position to be racked to do it.
I'm gonna ask a follow up question to that and I I mean no disrespect to this councillor when they ask this question. Do you believe municipal councillors are more reactive than proactive, particularly on social issues, social services files? And I say that with respect because it seems like you have a very proactive approach to. What you want to get done and how you want to help with the housing crisis within the province, but also in your city. Would you say that municipalities are more reactive than proactive in these issues?
What else to say about this? I I don't think you know, totally avoid being reactive to things because you can't foresee everything that will happen. The best you could do is if you have a vision, have a framework in place to to enact that that vision. I I can't speak for what came before and on previous councils, but I can speak to what we're doing now and on this issue on reconciliation. On a few other things, we have, we have a vision, we have vision number one and that's where we started and number two. The next step was was coming with a framework and for instance. Tonight at City Hall, in our meeting, we're we're gonna have an update on our reconciliation. Plan. So these are early days, first year of the new term and what I foresee is that. Not that I'm trying to boost what we're doing, but you know, we we have, we we have, we have. We see that we see the way forward, right? And. We are proactive on uncertain issues. What's what, what we can't avoid is what we don't know and those are the things we have to be reactive to. And the benefit of being reactive, being being a former scout leader, you know, be prepared is their motto. And if if you're if you're prepared and you are able to. Perceive what what may be an issue, the things that you're doing are that are reactive are not necessarily knee jerk. Rash things that you're doing to 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 either react to something that's happening right now or kicking a can in the road and. That's where, that's where I see we're at on that.
No, and I appreciate your honesty on that question, Ryan. I'm gonna turn to the last segment here because we're almost at the forty minute mark and I said thirty to forty minutes. And I want to make sure you have time to go do what you need to do as a busy person. And this is about a sort of. Pitch your community and the first question I'm gonna ask to you is what makes the city of Laduke so unique?
I think the most obvious thing to someone coming here for the first time. Would be our very expansive and dare I say lovely network of of trails and parks. Natural areas and recreational areas. So we have, we have two main lakes for the big park runs. Telford Lake and there's a, there's a, there's a trail that goes around Telford Lake that's that's eight kilometers long and then there's. Fred Johns Park and there's a reservoir there and if you're driving by on Highway two and you you drive by our big flag pole and the. The fighter jet that's painted up and there's a fountain in the lake, that's 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 Fred Johns Park and. The the beauty of our community is is stunning and the one thing that residents always respond. Well about on on surveys because we we do, we check in every year to see what people think about what we're doing. They always say parks, trails and then our recreational facilities. Our multiway that goes all through the city is just a great resource. I'm always walking on it. They're all very well used, winter and summer. And it's it's great for the health of our community. It's it's great for making a walkable community and it's great for and. All the neighborhoods are are connected through it. Less obvious and you need to be here for for this is the. The sense cohesion amongst the people here and in the sense of belonging, the sense of the sense of community. And the sense of responsibility to to one's neighbors and and to the society at large. That became apparent to me soon after moving here and getting involved in community activities is that. The city has grown population wise, but what hasn't been lost is the sense of. That exists in small towns and I've lived in a number of them. Is that we all belong to one another and. That that was evident very soon after moving here.
Well, I I I've been to Laduke a few times in my travels and I can tell you that. I've driven into the community and it doesn't even feel like a city for sometimes. It still feels like a small town when you drive downtown. And I I wish you the best in the future, but before we go, I have one last thing to ask you and that is. If I was a tourist, if there's someone listening to this right now in Saskatchewan or. Manitoba, Ontario, where where I'm originally from or back east where you were born in the Atlantic Maritime Provinces. What would you say is their number one stop they need to do if they visit the city of Laduke? Like, is there a restaurant that you would always recommend? Is there a park that you would recommend? He's talked about the trail systems, but. What what should a tourist do while they're in the city?
Okay, in terms of a restaurant, yeah, yeah, there's, there's, there's a place I like to go for and that's, that's the Rural Roots Restaurant. And and brewery that they have there. I like to get. Coffee at the darkest coffee place that's right by the Chamber of Commerce there. I'm not gonna give away my favorite place in Laduke because I don't want to become overrun. I like, I like to keep that secret to myself. But what I have to say is, I've already mentioned it, the trails around Telford Lake, you you can walk for a long time and. It's, you're able to see the countryside around you, the the farmlands, it's very serene. And I do that to whenever my brain is overflowing, I go for a nice walk out in that area and I come back healed.
Well, and I always, I would recommend the the Frisbee Golf Course that you guys have as well, which. I've enjoyed and I've taken part of a few times on my travels, so I would recommend.
Yeah, it it's an expansive course and that's in Fred Johns Park, yeah.
Certainly is. Councillor, I want to thank you so much for doing this. This has been an honor and a pleasure to sit down to talk about yourself, your city and also. Why makes it so unique? So thank you so much.
I really enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
So with that, I want to remind everyone, put down your social media account for at least five minutes a day and go have a conversation with somebody. It helps our society. Helps our democracy and helps us be a better people at the end of the day. So with that, my name's Christopher Brown. This has been the Cross Border Interviews with Chris Brown. Have yourself an excellent day and remember everyone, keep talking.